It's now ten twenty-five and the council is one member shy of a quorum. So with Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Ludlow, Mr. Reyes and Mr. Viragosa, please come to the council chair. Good morning. We do now have a quorum. Would the council please come to session? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohan Labanj, Ludlow Miskowski Parks, Perry Reyes Smith, Viragosa White Sign Padilla, ten members present in the quorum. Madam President.
All right, council is in session. Um, Mr. Labanj, I understand you had a special visitor you wanted to introduce today, so let us begin with that.
Madam President, we have a very special guest here with us this morning, the Deputy Assistant Secretary of State at the Office of Foreign Missions from the United States State Department, Mr. Lydwood Dent. He's on a tour of his offices here in California, including our own office here. He visited with Jeff Sealy, our Deputy Regional Director here in Los Angeles. But I'm going to ask if I would, Madam President, and Mr. Dent lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance if we could right now.
It is our custom on the first Tuesday of the week to begin our session with the Pledge of Allegiance, so could I ask everyone to please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dent, thank you on behalf of the mayor and the city council. We want to certainly welcome you here. Uh, Madam President, as you know, next to New York City, Hong Kong, it's Los Angeles. It's the number one spot for consulate offices, eighty-nine now. I used to say eighty-seven. I got corrected this morning, Jeff. And Lydwood, I wanted to present this certificate of welcome that you could present on your wall, so when Colin Powell's walking down the office scene, if you're still working after five, he'll see that great seal of the City of Los Angeles and know that you're welcome here and appreciate all the work the State Department does around the world to help America and certainly help all those who have questions about our great country. Just want to give them official welcome. Would you please welcome Mr. Lydwood Dent?
Welcome, Mr. Dent. Thank you for visiting, and I think you see sort of ambassador material standing next to you. He's our ambassador to Los Angeles, Tom Labanj.
Madam President, thank you, but I also want to introduce a great ambassador, Jeff Sealy, who is our Los Angeles office, but also he lives on Wilton with his wonderful wife, and he just came back. He was a United States soldier in Afghanistan. He was called up because he has expertise in organizing for the military, and he's called away, and he just...
It's now 10:25 and the council is one member shy of a quorum. So with Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Ludlow, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Vieragosa, please come to the council chair. Agenda. Good morning. We do now have a quorum. Would the council please come to session? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vieragosa, Weiss, Sein, Padilla, ten members present in the quorum. Madam President.
All right, council is in session. Mr. Labange, I understand you had a special visitor you wanted to introduce today, so let us begin with that.
Madam President, we have a very special guest here with us this morning, the Deputy Assistant Secretary of State at the Office of Foreign Missions from the United States State Department, Mr. Lydwood Dent. He's on a tour of his offices here in California, including our own office here. He visited with Jeff Seeley, our Deputy Regional Director here in Los Angeles. But I'm going to ask if I would, Madam President, and Mr. Dent lead us in the pledge of allegiance if we could right now.
It is our custom on the first Tuesday of the week to begin our session with the pledge of allegiance, so could I ask everyone to please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dent, thank you on behalf of the mayor and the city council. We want to certainly welcome you here. Madam President, as you know, next to New York City, Hong Kong, it's Los Angeles. It's the number one spot for consulate offices. Eighty-nine now, I used to say eighty-seven. I got corrected this morning, Jeff. And Lydwood, I wanted to present this certificate of welcome that you could present on your wall, so when Cole and Powell's walking down the office, and if you're still working after five, he'll see that great seal of the City of Los Angeles and know that you're welcome here and appreciate all the work the State Department does around the world to help America and certainly help all those who have questions about our great country. Just want to give them official welcome. Would you please welcome Mr. Lydwood Dent?
Welcome, Mr. Dent. Thank you for visiting, and I think you see sort of ambassador material standing next to you. He's our ambassador to Los Angeles, Tom Labange.
Madam President, thank you. But I also want to salute the great ambassador, Jeff Seeley, who is our Los Angeles office, but also he lives on Wilton with his wonderful wife, and he just came back. He was a United States soldier in Afghanistan. He was called up because he has expertise in organizing for the military, and he's called away, and he just served five months, six months, nine months away. So I just want to salute Jeff Seeley, a returning veteran who also is a member of the Office of Foreign Affairs for the State Department. Please salute Jeff Seeley. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Labange, and welcome to our visitors. Madam Clerk, let's go through the items.
The first order is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves, Mr. Sein seconds. The minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Han moves, and Mr. Garcetti seconds. Those are also approved.
Madam President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
We have no public comment cards that were submitted. All the cards are submitted for items that are on the agenda, so we will open and close the public hearing and proceed with the items.
First items are items for which public hearings have been held, items one through twenty-seven. Item one is confirmation of a city official. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, let's hold that on the desk.
And also on item number seven, there is an old Budget and Finance Committee report that was referred from council, and that should be received and filed inasmuch as the new report supersedes it.
All right, we will... Is there any objection to receiving and filing item seven?
That would be the old report on number seven.
The old report on item seven. We have the new report there, so we'll approve that.
And on items, excuse me, twenty-six and twenty-seven, there are two reports on the file, and I believe the recommendation would be to adopt the Budget and Finance Committee report on both those. A motion is required.
I would make a motion that the budget report on both items, please.
Very gracious of our Personnel Committee Chair to move the Budget and Finance Committee report. Yes, Ms. Han?
Let's call twenty-two special for Tom Labange.
All right, I don't think we're quite there yet. Let us add twenty-six and twenty-seven as moved, Budget and Finance. Yes? Madam Clerk, could the...
The items before council are items two through twenty-seven.
Two through twenty-seven, all right. So Mr. -- Ms. Han called item...
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two special.
Item twenty.
Item twenty.
Two and twenty-four, please.
Items two and twenty-four. All right.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Smith?
For Mr. Vieragosa's, twenty-one and twenty-three.
And Ms. Perry?
Item sixteen.
Item sixteen as well. And Mr. Reyes, was yours... Mr. Reyes, I saw you standing. Is yours already called special? All right. We have items two, sixteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four special. Anything else between two and twenty-seven? Seeing none, then those others, as the city clerk has presented them, are now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved.
And the ordinance on item number thirty will go over for one week also.
All right, that will be the order.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items twenty-eight through sixty-three. Ten votes are required for consideration, and there is a confirmation on item number twenty-eight. Do you wish to hold that on the desk also?
Yes, we'll hold twenty-eight. So we have twenty-nine through sixty-three. There are no cards submitted. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on twenty-nine through sixty-three? If not, the hearing is open and the hearing is closed. Those matters are now before us. Mr. Smith?
Item number twenty-nine, please.
Item twenty-nine is called special by Mr. Smith. Any others, members, thirty through sixty-three? Seeing none? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those matters are approved.
And the ordinance on item number thirty will go over for one week also.
All right, that will be the order.
Next item, Madam President, item number sixty-four is closed session. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, we will hold the closed session until later.
I believe Mr. Reyes has...
Madam President?
Mr. Reyes?
I'd like to request we can send that item back to Planning and Land Management Committee.
As item sixty-three, our closed session item?
Item number sixty-four.
Sixty-four. All right. Is there an objection to sending the closed session, item sixty-four, back to Plum? Seeing none, that will be the order. That will be the action on that.
On the supplemental agenda, item number sixty-five is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Item sixty-five is now before us. Mr. Garcetti? Special? All right, special on sixty-five.
Going back to the items called special, item number one was called special, and that was Commissioner Ms. Sarah Dussault for the L.A. Homeless Services Authority.
Ms. Perry?
I'm sorry, I just got a request on behalf of Mr. Parks to call item thirteen special.
All right, we will first need to make a motion to reconsider that action. Is there any objection to considering item thirteen? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, item thirteen is reconsidered. It will be called special per Mr. Parks' request. All right, that does bring us now to item number one, Sarah Dussault. Let's call her forward to the center table. Ms. Grul.
Eric jokingly said, "If you think we're going to vote for you because you brought a kid," which we all, you know...
It's a shameless ploy.
Shameless ploy. Well, Sarah, I wanted to stand up, Madam President, today in support of Sarah Dussault. We all have had the pleasure of working with her when she was Deputy Mayor on housing issues, and the L.A. Homeless Service Authority is a critical organization in the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles to deal with homeless issues. And just last week, we sat with many advocates and interested parties to talk about how we could address the homeless issue. And I can't think of anyone better than Sarah to be there to push, prod, cajole, and make sure that we, in fact, have a great homeless policy, our plan and homelessness. And so I'm looking forward to serving in that new role, and we can deal with that. And I won't talk much longer because I know what it's like to have an eleven-month-old. So I just want to be very supportive of Ms. Dussault's nomination and appointment to the city.
Mr. Garcetti?
And those are just the first answers to the questions. Well, I want to thank you, Sarah, for putting yourself forward. I know that Councilmember Grul is going to assist in the Child Care Department during the confirmation hearings, but I want to thank you for continuing your public service here in City Hall. And we unanimously passed this out of HCD Committee. I think we covered some of the homeless issues, but I can't think of somebody better qualified to really make sure that LSA is pushing on the plan and putting a number on that plan so that we can all, as political leaders, make that decision of, okay, if there's a cost to ending homelessness, this is what it is, and let's start doing that. Your success in helping with the Housing Trust Fund should really, I think, put you in good stead in knowing how to do that and to share that with the great people that already serve on LSA. So I'm just in fullest support and really looking forward to getting to work with you again. Thanks.
Mr. Reyes?
I'll make this brief. We're under a lot of pressure here, but I just want to say thank you for your hard work. One, knowing that we are now moving in a direction where we're creating catalytic projects. Now we have someone like yourself who understands the CRA, the city family, housing, and the attention you gave to all the neighborhoods, not just the well-to-do and not just desirable places, but actually the inner city and the neighborhoods that are going through those challenges, and I look forward to working with you, and have fun with your baby.
Mr. Cardenas?
I just want to say two things, Sarah. Thank you so much for all the service, and we appreciate your volunteer time on this commission. And also, before Tom Labange asks, what high school is your son going to go to?
Sarah, I think that concludes the speakers. I don't know if you have anything you want to say to us?
No. Yeah. Just that I will pay for any damages that are caused because I know the city needs money, but also that it's an honor to continue to serve, and I'm really excited to look at this difficult issue, but to try and find resources to address it.
All right, members, we have the committee report before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
You are unanimously confirmed. Congratulations, and the city looks forward to your coming back and assisting us. Next item?
Item number twenty-eight, and that is confirmation of Mr. Alvin Blaine as General Manager of the General Services Department.
Can we have Mr. Blaine come forward? And Mr. Weiss, did you press your button on this one?
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome, Mr. Blaine. I hope and expect you'll have an easier time controlling your family than our previous nominee, but I just want to congratulate you on this confirmation today. It's been a pleasure getting to know you. It's been a pleasure working with you on the items that have come through the ITGS Committee, and I've been so impressed with what you've managed to do in the period of time you've been given to run the department so far. I just look forward to, you know, many more years of your successful service. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sein?
Thank you, Madam President. Alvin, thirty-one years with the city of Los Angeles. You started out when we had horse and buggy, and now we've got fast cars and motorcycles. More horses, yeah. Well, we do have a management unit. I know that you've been very dedicated to the city. Any dealings I've had with you have been very, very positive. I know your love for the city, your commitment to the taxpayers and to the employees, and to run that department as extensive as it is with the problems, the associated factors that are involved in it. You definitely have the experience, you have the commitment, you have the dedication. So I think it's a very appropriate promotion to take over the helm as the General Manager, and I wish you well in that endeavor. If you just continue doing what you've been doing all these years, very positive, very motivated, tenacious in getting the job done, you'll do extremely well. So congratulations. You've got my support, and you always have, and try and learn to ride motorcycles on a street instead of the dirt, because I know you're a dirt rider, I'm a street rider. But keep up the good work, and I wish you well in that new endeavor. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ludlow?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate it. Just, Alvin, I want to say a couple of things. One is I think everybody in the chambers and people watching can relate to the feeling that you go through when you decide you're going to seek a promotion. It's a difficult moment sometimes for people to be willing to put themselves out there for the potential that you won't get what you're seeking. But what I think is a real tribute to your appointment today is that you had an amazing crew of competitors who are all very bright, very gifted, very capable, who quite honestly are going to be a great team with you. But amongst that team, I think you impressed on a number of people, certain elements that they were looking for, certain values. You were able to succeed in garnering the commitment of the mayor. All of us here know how important this new role will be in your life, but it's going to be essential in our life, to us. And we're in good hands with you. You've been an incredible asset to the city in many other roles that you've played. And so I congratulate you first personally, just on persevering. Secondly, having the caliber of challengers that you had for this position, because they're all very, very good human beings. But third, I think the city is the lucky victory here, because you're going to do a great, great job at this new position. I thank you for what you've done just in my first year on the council, and wish you the best of luck in this position as well. So congratulations and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Grul?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I too want to stand and congratulate Alvin as the new General Manager, because I assume that you will be unanimously approved today. The General Services Department is not one that people out in the city necessarily know, our constituents know, what General Services does. Those of us in this room in this horseshoe know how important the role that you play and your staff plays in the operation of the city and procurement and security and managing leases and buildings and all of that, and it's really critical. And I know that with your reputation, that you're going to be an excellent head of this department, and know that those of us around this table also call you to task many times and ask for your help and support with some challenges, but I know you're up to the task and want to acknowledge all the other staff I know that are present here who work so very hard in General Services Department. So we look forward to working with you in your new role, although you've been at the department for a while, but want to challenge you as the Chair of Audits and Government Efficiency to come forward with other recommendations on how we can be more efficient, how we can utilize some of the experiences, I think, in General Services with other departments in the city where you've been able to save money or be more efficient, and look forward to some of those ideas coming forward. I know that you had a great relationship also with the unions that you represent, that represent the employees in your area. So thank you. I want to apologize to your wife already, because we will be having him out weekends and evenings, so you have to share him with the rest of us. But congratulations and thanks for your willingness to continue your service in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reyes?
I'd just rise and say congratulations. Watching a person go through all the ranks, through all these years, and reach this pinnacle is truly an accomplishment, and I want to thank you for your hard work. You've always been there for our office, and I'm always appreciative. Look forward to working with you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Madam President, and congratulations as well. It's wonderful to see somebody from the inside come up. I know we're great in the city of attracting outside help, but it's always nice to know that somebody has come from within the department. Congratulations on your great work. I don't know if you've answered any questions yet, so I think you've got to have at least one or two questions. So two questions for you. One, will you kind of outline what we can do? I think we've made tremendous strides. Air pollution in the city is one of the day-after-day concerns, health concerns that almost all Angelenos share. We've made tremendous strides in converting a lot of our vehicle fleet to either alternative fuel, hybrid, or other emission-reducing technologies. Can you detail what you'd like to see us do and where we can go further with that? And then as a second question, can you kind of give us an outline of what leadership you'd bring to the ongoing surplus property mapping project that we've been doing at General Services, which I know is of concern to a lot of people out there?
I'll do my best. I'll see if I can keep from biting the microphone here in the process. In regards to the cleaning the air, we work very closely with EAD on that issue. The state recently passed, or is about to pass, two rules. One rule, which is with refuse, where it goes into effect next year that we have to use the latest available technology. I believe it's ten percent at the end of '04 and fifteen percent the following year. I'm proud to say that we've already converted our fleet to the latest technology. We've been there since '01, so we've already met that mandate. The second one, which the governor just signed on the carpool lanes for the hybrids, we now have in excess of 500 hybrid vehicles in the city. So that actually is a productivity improvement for city employees, because they can take our cars into the carpool lane and get there faster. The third one, which they're passing, is to clean up the air by '09, and they're making much stringent rules on greenhouse gases. By us buying the hybrids, which are rated at ATPZF, that's the cleanest, or one of the cleanest available vehicles on the road, and that is our standard vehicle. In regards to alternative fuels, our refuse fleet is now the largest municipal refuse fleet in the nation. We have over 250 refuse trucks on LNG. In regards to sweepers, we just placed an order on street sweepers, which will make us the largest sweeping fleet on all fuels. So we're trying to stay ahead of the rules. Many of the rules, I believe, are being drafted in response to what we do. And our off-road fleet, our stationary fleet, are now on low sulfur diesel field. We'll soon be testing some hybrid trucks as well as particulate traps on off-road. The laws for those have not even been designed yet, so we're ahead of the curve on that. In regards to your second question on the surplus property, General Services has finished our list of the 600 parcels of surplus property. We're working very closely with Recreation and Parks and Housing. They're looking at the list right now to see what parcels are usable for them, so we're moving forward with that.
Have you included the Community Redevelopment Agency in those discussions, too? Where there's...
I believe at this point, we're letting Recreation and Parks for the parks and housing, but we can include them.
Yeah, I think that would be good, where there's redevelopment areas, just to make sure that we have all of our people on the same page. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, Alvin. Thank you. And I think all the members spoke very eloquently on various issues about your dedication and service, which is so important, and spoke about the team that's around you, whether it's the city printer or your executive secretary or whomever is there to help and support you. That's the can-do spirit. I think Mr. Garcetti, though, made a point about the real estate, which is so important, to make sure we are focused on that and we know, and with technology, that we can pick up, and then that we know if we own the property at 1739 North Harvard or wherever it may be in the city of Los Angeles. That's just something. What do you see your department in two years? Because there's a lot of... See, the one thing, too, the public doesn't know what General Services does, but General Services does for all. You help everybody, because there's a lot of stress that we sometimes take away from you because we have to give to the departments that are serving the public. Give me a two-year forecast where you'd like to see things.
First of all, we are a service provider. We don't directly interface with the public in most of our divisions. We have very, very strong alliances with three departments. Recreation and Parks, John McCree; Sanitation, Rita Robinson; and Street Services, Bill Robinson. We make it a point to make their goals our goals. So whatever direction they're going, because they are the front line, we're in support of them. The other thing we do is we listen to our employees. We listen to the union.
I've been so impressed with what you've managed to do in the period of time you've been given to run the department so far. I just look forward to, you know, many more years of your successful service. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. Alvin, 31 years with the City of Los Angeles. You started out when we had horse and buggy. And now we've got fast cars and motorcycles. More horses, yeah. Well, we do have a management unit. I know that you've been very dedicated to this city. Any dealings I've had with you have been very, very positive. I know your love for the city, your commitment to the taxpayers and to the employees and to run that department as extensive as it is with the problems, the associated factors that are involved in it. You definitely have the experience, you have the commitment, you have the dedication. So, I think it's a very appropriate promotion to take over the helm as the general manager. And I wish you well in that endeavor. If you just continue doing what you've been doing all these years, very positive, very motivated, tenacious in getting the job done, you'll do extremely well. So, congratulations. You've got my support, and you always have. And try and learn to ride motorcycles on a street instead of the dirt, because I know you're a dirt rider, I'm a street rider. But keep up the good work, and I wish you well in that new endeavor. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ludlow.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate it. Just, Alvin, I want to say a couple of things. One is, I think everybody in the chambers and people watching can relate to the feeling that you go through when you decide you're going to seek a promotion. It's a difficult moment sometimes for people to be willing to put themselves out there for the potential that you won't get what you're seeking. But what I think is a real tribute to your appointment today is that you had an amazing crew of competitors who are all very bright, very gifted, very capable, who quite honestly are going to be a great team with you. But amongst that team, I think you impressed on a number of people, certain elements that they were looking for, certain values. You were able to succeed in garnering the commitment of the mayor. All of us here know how important this new role will be in your life, but it's going to be essential in our life, to us. And we're in good hands with you. You've been an incredible asset to the city and many other roles that you've played. And so, I congratulate you first personally, just on persevering. Secondly, having the caliber of challengers that you had for this position, because they're all very, very good human beings. But third, I think the city is the lucky victory here, because you're going to do a great, great job at this new position. I thank you for what you've done, just in my first year on the council, and wish you the best of luck in this position as well. So, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I too want to stand and congratulate Alvin as the new general manager, because I assume that you will be unanimously approved today. The General Services Department is not one that people out in the city necessarily know, our constituents know what General Services does. Those of us in this room, in this horseshoe, know how important the role that you play and your staff plays in the operation of the city and procurement and security and managing leases and buildings and all of that. And it's really critical. And I know that with your reputation, that you're going to be an excellent head of this department, and know that those of us around this table also call you to task many times and ask for your help and support with some challenges, but I know you're up to the task. And want to acknowledge all the other staff I know that are present here who works very hard in General Services Department. So, we look forward to working with you in your new role, although you've been at the department for a while, but want to challenge you as the Chair of Audits and Government Efficiency to come forward with other recommendations on how we can be more efficient, how we can utilize some of the experiences, I think, in General Services with other departments in the city where you've been able to save money or be more efficient, and look forward to some of those ideas coming forward. I know that you had a great relationship also with the unions that you represent, that represent the employees in your area. So, thank you. I want to apologize to your wife already, because we will be having him out weekends and evenings, so you have to share him with the rest of us. But congratulations and thanks for your willingness to continue your service in the City of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reyes.
I'd just rise and say congratulations. Watching a person go through all the ranks, through all these years, and reach this pinnacle is truly an accomplishment, and I want to thank you for your hard work. You've always been there for our office, and I'm always appreciative. Look forward to working with you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and congratulations as well. It's wonderful to see somebody from the inside come up. I know we're great in the City of attracting outside help, but it's always nice to know that somebody has come from within the department. Congratulations on your great work. I don't know if you've answered any questions yet, so I think you've got to have at least one or two questions. So, two questions for you. One, will you kind of outline what we can do? I think we've made tremendous strides. Air pollution in the city is one of the day-after-day concerns, health concerns, that almost all Angelenos share. We've made tremendous strides in converting a lot of our vehicle fleet to either alternative fuel, hybrid, or other emission-reducing technologies. Can you detail what you'd like to see us do and where we can go further with that? And then, as a second question, can you kind of give us an outline of what leadership you'd bring to the ongoing surplus property mapping project that we've been doing at General Services, which I know of concern to a lot of people out there?
I'll do my best. I'll see if I can keep from biting the microphone here in the process. In regards to the cleaning the air, we work very closely with EAD on that issue. The state recently passed, or is about to pass, two rules. One rule, which is with refuse, where it goes into effect next year that we have to use the latest available technology. I believe it's 10% at the end of '04 and 15% the following year. I'm proud to say that we've already converted our fleet to the latest technology. We've been there since '01, so we've already met that mandate. The second one, which the governor just signed on the carpool lanes for the hybrids, we now have in excess of 500 hybrid vehicles in the city. So, that actually is a productivity improvement for city employees, because they can take our cars into the carpool lane and get there faster. The third one, which they're passing, is to clean up the air by '09, and they're making much stringent rules on greenhouse gases. By us buying the hybrids, which are rated at ATPZF, that's the cleanest, or one of the cleanest available vehicles on the road, and that is our standard vehicle. In regards to alternative fuels, our refuse fleet is now the largest municipal refuse fleet in the nation. We have over 250 refuse trucks on LNG. In regards to sweepers, we just placed an order on street sweepers, which will make us the largest sweeping fleet on alt fuels. So, we're trying to stay ahead of the rules. Many of the rules, I believe, are being drafted in response to what we do. And our off-road fleet, our stationary fleet, are now on low sulfur diesel field. We'll soon be testing some hybrid trucks, as well as particulate traps on off-road. The laws for those have not even been designed yet, so we're ahead of the curve on that. In regards to your second question on the surplus property, General Services has finished our list of the 600 parcels of surplus property. We're working very closely with Recreation and Parks and Housing. They're looking at the list right now to see what parcels are usable for them, so we're moving forward with that.
Have you included the Community Redevelopment Agency in those discussions, too? Where there's...
I believe at this point, we're letting Recreation and Parks for the parks and housing, but we can include them.
Yeah, I think that would be good, where there's redevelopment areas, just to make sure that we have all of our people on the same page.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Alvin. Thank you. And I think all the members spoke very eloquently on various issues about your dedication and service, which is so important, and spoke about the team that's around you, whether it's the City Printer or your Executive Secretary, or whomever is there to help and support you. That's the can-do spirit. I think Mr. Garcetti, though, made a point about the real estate, which is so important, to make sure we are focused on that, and we know, and with technology, that we could pick up, and then that we know if we know the property, if we own the property at 1739 North Harvard, or wherever it may be in the City of Los Angeles. That's just something. What do you, what do you see your department in two years? Because there's a lot of, see, the one thing, too, the public doesn't know what General Services does, but General Services does for all. You help everybody, because there's a lot of stress that we sometimes take away from you, because we have to give to the departments that are serving the public. Give me a two-year forecast where you'd like to see things.
First of all, we are a service provider. We don't directly interface with the public in most of our divisions. We have very, very strong alliances with three departments. Recreation and Parks, John McCree; sanitation, Rita Robinson; and street services, Bill Robinson. We make it a point to make their goals our goals. So, whatever direction they're going, because they are the front line, we're in support of them. The other thing we do is, we listen to our employees. We listen to the union, because they have wonderful ideas. Quite often, we do what we call pilots, where we try these ideas for future things. Some of them work, some of them don't. The ones that do work, we move on. We make them productivity awards. It's just a wonderful thing, because it's not one person running the department. We have several thousand with lots of ideas, looking forward as a team.
Well, good. I was interested in the paper today, there's a picture of the Caltrans building and the awning, you know, and their great new building over there that Tom Main designed, and in the background was our city hall. Our public buildings are extremely important for, because they're to last a lifetime like this building has, and it's got a new lifetime with its rehabilitation. How focused are you on our public buildings and our regional city halls?
We're very focused. If you look at our Building Maintenance Division, it's been, I don't want to use the word neglected, but it's been short-staffed for many, many years. And they don't have the technology at this point to track much of it, like some of the other divisions. So, that is our top priority in our department this year, to bring the technology into Building Services, so they can have more opportunity to do a better job.
There's one little, small thing I actually need to stretch to at last, because I know it's difficult. But often, we have a city building, and for whatever reason, sometimes, because of challenges, there's trash in the street, sometimes. And I'm just going to ask Wreck-It Parks and also General Services to help out street services, and who's ever responsible for that, to just go the extra step and get that out of the gutter, because 86% of all trash in the gutter goes down the drain into the ocean. And I just want to, it really bothers me when we see a nice, everything looks good on the front of the property, but because of the challenges in the street, because we don't have enough sweepers, we need to go the extra step. So, if you could do that, Alvin, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. And, Mr. Blain, I was just talking with your press agent, Mr. Fujioka, back here, and I do not want to embarrass you in any way, but he just told me a little bit about, you know, your extraordinary rise, and about where you got your start and about how you got your start. It's very inspiring. If you could just tell us for a minute about how you did get started working for the City of Los Angeles, and, you know, if you ever thought, at that point, if you'd end up sitting here doing what you're doing now.
You know, Bill said he was going to pick on me, but I didn't take him serious.
It gets much worse after you get in. Trust me.
I didn't want to mention this to Dennis Zine, but when I started with the city in 1973 as a garage attendant with the police department, I was probably washing his motorcycle. And I started as a garage attendant with the police department, and after one year, I transferred over to General Services. And I went through the ranks of equipment mechanic, heavy-duty mechanic, and all of the supervisory positions there. I guess if I was to summarize my career, the most important thing to me has always been to take care of the customer. And as I rose through the ranks, I realized that our customer might have been Street Services, or possibly one of you, but the end result was that Street Services, Sanitation, Recreation and Parks, or yourself had to take care of the citizens. So, I guess in my part, I was indirectly helping the citizens. And I learned early on that I'm not a smart man, so I try to surround myself by smart people, and I try to get them to grow. I try to get them to think outside the box. And I think if you look at General Services right now, in particular, the employees look outside of the box. We work with the union. They're a very important part of this. Management works with the employees, because you can't do it by yourself. You have to do it as a team. We even work with Bill. We buy him gum occasionally, because he can't smoke in here, so. So, you know, it's a team. It's not a General Services team. It's not an employee team. It's our team, and it has to be done together, because you can't do it by yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Blain, and thank you, Mr. Weiss, for asking that question. I think some of us had read that, but hearing you say it and tell the story again in public, on TV, and as we make this decision, was appropriate. The matter is now before us, members. It's both the confirmation of the appointment and the EERC recommendation. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations, Alvin.
Thank you.
We will send that forthwith as well. And we had a request forthwith on item one also. Madam Clerk, let's, with 12 members here, reopen the issues that were ordinances.
That would be items three, four, five, six, and 30.
Members, for purposes of not putting those over one week, 30, I believe, was, okay, three, four, five, six, and 30 are ordinances. Let's reconsider the matter. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, those matters are before us. I think none of them were called special, so we can again put those matters as ordinances before us for a vote. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, those are approved. Next item?
Next item called special. Item number two was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti, we also have a card on the file.
Do you want to take our question?
We have a card. I don't know that it's required public hearing.
Okay.
It did have a committee hearing.
Okay. I just wanted to rise briefly on this. I think there, it's incumbent upon us, as we're looking long, long-term, or longer term, at a regional solution for airports, and I know that we're all going to be debating LAX shortly, but that plan might get us through, if we're lucky, say, 15 years of growth, to really be thinking long-term, as most kind of visionary cities have, Denver, Shanghai. We look at the growth in places like Hong Kong, eventually of where we're going to put a regional hub, airport, a place that is good not only for cargo, but also for transportation. When Ms. Han and Mr. Padilla and I were in Asia, we saw the success of some of those airports. I was very pleased to see the LA Times actually do an editorial on this, and we look at the potential for keeping the growth going while at the same time respecting communities and serving the both inland empire, if we can do this with rail, the San Fernando Valley, et cetera. I know this is not specifically eminent domain for us to start building that airport, but obviously, it's smart thinking in looking towards that route. It's something that I think, if we're truly going to rebuild this city from the ground up, it's something that we need to look at, because as much as we can expand Ontario, as much as we can hope that folks of the South might do something, we're not going to get a lot of numbers there, but there's rich possibilities up in Palmdale.
All right. We do have a committee report, and a public hearing was held in committee. This matter is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That matter is approved. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Madam President. In contrast with the rules, since we only have 13 right now, we might lose a quorum. Item 29 has an ordinance attached. I wish we'd take that out of ordinance, because it is, out of order, because it is an emergency ordinance.
All right. Is there any objection to taking 29 out of order for consideration of the ordinance? Seeing none, item 29 is before us. That was called special by Mr. Smith. Let me recognize Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a very important ordinance for the City of LA, because we've all been dealing with the issue of West Nile virus. I know that Councilwoman Gruel and Councilwoman Han both introduced motions to help us solve some of the issues revolving around that. This ordinance that's before you today will hopefully help us solve some of those other issues. Before, again, I want to introduce two special guests here today. I would like to introduce Jackie and Dick Martin, who is here from Northridge. They are the family of Hester Martin, who was the first citizen of Los Angeles who died due to West Nile virus. And I thank them for being here today. They were very encouraging to me as I went through this process, and I appreciate very much your being here, but also our condolences on your loss. And I want you to know the city council adjourned in your mother's honor right after the unfortunate occurrence. When this happened in the City of LA, all of us took note. We all wanted to do something very important. We brought together our Public Works Department, all the people that go out and deal with the issue of ponding water and the concerns with Wreck-It Parks, et cetera. What happened was, as chairman of the Public Works Committee, I brought together all those agencies and sat them in the office. We went down a list of things that we could be doing, and first of all, in compliance with Ms. Han, Ms. Gruel's recommendations and requests, but also, I asked the question of those in the room, what else can be done that we are not doing? And very surprisingly to me, the representative from the LA County Vector Control Department said to me, "We don't have an enabling ordinance that allows us to go onto city property, property within the City of LA, where there is a problem, and try and get the problem resolved." There is no such ordinance on the books, and we think that would be very helpful to us. Needless to say, I was surprised, and the city attorney were surprised, that no ordinance existed that allows them to do their job. And so, what you have before you today is a response to that request. It does a number of things. First of all, it takes into account the concerns that Ms. Han had in particular about going onto private property and trying to find people, be repressive in the way we attack this issue, creating hardships on citizens unnecessarily. So, this does not do that. First of all, by policy of vector control, as well as this ordinance, it says that, first of all, you're going to go knock on the door, you're going to ask for compliance, you're going to ask them to help you out. If they won't, you can issue orders that say, "Please abate the problem within 72 hours," and then only if a person does not cooperate, would then they have the right, if they so choose, to, one, go to court and get a subpoena to enter the property. So, we're not giving them the right to just go onto the property and do something, but they would go to court and get a subpoena to go onto the property. And secondly, that if they find a problem, then they could process it as a misdemeanor, if there's somebody truly recalcitrant. I have, in my discussions of vector control, found that that's never been the case that they can really think of. Most people are very cooperative. We also asked the question about things like, what happens if people are not home? What if they're on vacation? And this provides a process that says, first of all, you will do everything in your power to attempt to notify them, and only if they don't, if they're not able to notify them, then would you have the ability to court, go to court, or just try and find other ways to abate the problem. This is not designed as a repressive response of government to take people's personal property rights away. More importantly, as Vector Control would tell you, and I'll call them up in just a moment, this is not an attempt to go after Fido's water bowl. This is not an attempt to go after the little tiny wading pool in the backyard. This is the problem dealing with large bodies of water. Primary pools and spas are large ponds of water on large property. I would only remind you that 80% of the water ponding problems in the county are on private property, not on public property. And so, this is an ordinance that allows them to do their job, where they weren't allowed to do it before, without creating mechanisms that go in to take people's rights away from them, but really just give the Vector Control the opportunity to do its job. Finally, I think it's important to also note that they are, really want to do their job. They're not trying to force people to do things, but where it becomes a health problem, and this is what West Nile has become, is a truly life-threatening health problem, that this gives the Vector Control people the ability and the tools they need to complete their job in the interest of public health, not in the interest of creating revenues for the city or Vector Control, but just doing their job. With that, I know there are issues before the council, and people have some questions. I'd like to ask Mr. Pritzker from the City Attorney's Office to come forward, and also we have with us today Stephanie Milden from LA County Vector Control that can also ask her questions, should you so desire. Thank you, members.
All right, we have the city attorney present to answer questions. Councilmember Han, you're next on the speaker queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Councilman Smith, for, I think, doing a better job, as far as I'm concerned, of explaining what this ordinance would actually look like, and may I offer my deepest sympathies for you. I appreciate your courage coming down here. This has been an issue that we have really been very much concerned with, and have been trying to be out in front of it to prevent deaths from this terrible virus, so our deepest sympathies. We're, hopefully, this is one instance where we really are trying to do something that'll make a difference. Maybe not this season, but certainly, it doesn't sound like this is going to be going away for many years. I appreciate a lot of your comments. I had concerns. As you know, it seemed to me like Vector Control was going to be going in and citing senior citizens who may have had a bit of water in a pot or a fountain that they didn't know about, and we would be making criminals of people in their own backyard. So, it feels better that there actually is a process. And I guess that's what I'd like to hear a little bit more about, is the process and, how are we really going to enforce this? Does Vector Control really have the kind of staff we're hoping for, that they're really going to be able to be going door-to-door and, you know, meeting with people, helping resolve these issues, educating people? I'm still a big believer that education is still where we ought to be putting the majority of our resources to let people understand where they might look for these hidden pools of water. So, what are we doing in terms of education? Do we really have the kind of staff on Vector Control to, you know, identify these problems? And in terms of the city attorney, how might people have recourse if they have been cited and maybe didn't know about it? And what's a process, so that, in the event, we're not making criminals out of average citizens, but in fact, we're really solving the problem that we all want to solve, which is the prevention of the spread of West Nile virus?
Well, you asked a series of both legal and nonlegal questions. Why don't I very briefly answer those that relate to the law? What we put together is an ordinance that allows the Vector Control districts that operate within the city, and there are two of them, to work more quickly in remediating this problem. Currently, there are provisions in the State Health and Safety Code that allow the abatement of such problems, but those procedures are cumbersome and would, might take a month to two months for remediation. What we've done here is allowed the Vector Control districts, through an ordinance that the city would be adopting, that within the city, they could knock on someone's door if someone's there, to allow them permission to go into the back, they could investigate, and even assist them in remediating the problem. We would require residents, if there is evidence of breeding mosquitoes, and only if there is evidence of breeding mosquitoes, to have to remediate that problem within 72 hours. If no one is home, then a notice would be left on the door, and the Vector Control people could come back as soon as 24 hours later, but no sooner than 24 hours later. If they thought it was necessary, they could obtain a search warrant to go into the property. Moreover...
Let me just stop you right there and say, if no one's home, how would you be able to find evidence of breeding mosquitoes?
That's a good question.
Thank you.
I understand that sometimes neighbors will report...
What is that? What is evidence of breeding mosquitoes?
Well, I would think that, and perhaps I should defer to my colleague here. Do you want to talk about that?
Well, for example, if someone, if a neighbor did look over their fence and notice their neighbor has a bad pool that is very stagnant and green, typically, those type of sources will be breeding mosquitoes. So, from there, the neighbor could file a anonymous service request, and we can go out and attempt to make contact with the resident, and as Keith had mentioned, if they're not home, we will leave a notice on the door, and they will hopefully call us back, and we can come out to that resident and either treat the pool for mosquitoes, and of course, speak with them, and hopefully, they can remove the water from that pool.
If they're on vacation in our back in 72 hours...
Well, then, we have the ability to remediate the problem. After all, you know, we're talking about a very serious public health threat.
Right, I agree.
So, we have, that's what this ordinance is doing, is it's giving the mosquito abatement district the ability to go onto people's property with the proper legal safeguards and remediate that problem. If there is someone at home, and they say, "We will not allow you to go in our backyard, we won't allow you to remediate the problem," then we do have misdemeanor provisions that could be applied. And if the mosquito abatement district does have to use its resources to remediate the problems, we have a cost recovery scheme as well.
Fine, I think my time's up, and I'm happy to support this today. I guess what I'd like to know from Vector Control is, do we think we did the best job we could have this year with education? And what are we doing in the future to make sure those people who could possibly present a public health safety issue are fully educated and warned about the dangers of what it is we're going to be going in and citing them for?
Well, for our PR efforts and education efforts, we do have an education program aimed at elementary school children. The kids learn about this in school, and they pass on the information to their parents. We also have a VecMobile, which is a 35-foot RV that goes to classrooms also and educates children. We did implement a wipe-out West Nile virus ad campaign, to where we had paid radio spots, it was on television, newspaper, and we actually had flyers that were sent to local grocery stores in English and Spanish and in Chinese to educate the public on West Nile. And also, the LA County Health Department has helped out with educating the public on West Nile.
All right, thank you for the answer to that. Next speaker is Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Smith. A lot of the questions I had, you answered in your presentation, which was, was their recourse, and it sounds like they have to go to a judge to be able to go into the neighborhood. We had an experience in my district, which is ongoing, next to Walter Reed Middle School, where a neighbor was complaining about a pool. Actually, vector control did go out to the property. The property owner was cited. And right now, what Building and Safety has done some of the activity, because it was related to a pool, they posted on the front door, and there was two weeks to comply. Will that change what we currently have now? So it'll no longer be two weeks, it'll be 72 hours?
That's correct.
Okay, so it'll change our current ordinance, but right now it would be a two-weeks end?
Well, what we're not changing, what we're changing is we're adopting an ordinance that will allow for quicker remediation, and that previous law was state law that the vector control district was relying upon. And that's why they came to us, because they felt that the state law did not allow them to act quickly enough.
Quickly enough in two weeks?
Right.
Okay. And there currently is a $250 fine that they receive if the property owner does not comply. Would that change?
Well, we're making this a misdemeanor, so it could be as high as $1,000. And there's also time in jail under a standard misdemeanor. But that's true of every provision in our municipal code.
Okay. And I think, again, as Mr. Smith, to try to deal with some of the issues that we had, because I know I've had a few constituents who have disagreements with their neighbors who sometimes come in and complain, and we don't want to overreact, but we also want to respond to something that is very serious, and worked very closely, obviously, with Mr. Smith and Ms. Hahn and others to do what we could to educate the public and identify resources to clean up some of the areas that the city has responsibility for. So I think my questions have been answered relative to ensuring there's some process whereby they can't just walk in, but they do go to a judge and get that ability too. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Zein.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Smith, I know that our areas have been impacted by this. I don't see many crows in the neighborhood anymore. They seem to have vanished, and I know that the West Nile was responsible for that. A number of my constituents contacted my office concerned about how to handle this, how to respond to it. I remember when they had spraying with the aircraft over many regions of Southern California, there was a big outcry. And I look at our meter readers that go into private property and check the meters. I don't look at this as law enforcement. I look at this as simply public safety and public health. So I strongly support it. The constituents out in the West Valley who've been impacted by this are concerned. My condolences to the family and all the families that have suffered the death of this mosquito bite that obviously has some deadly consequences. We need to be concerned about public health and public safety, along with people's rights. But when I see a meter reader go into a yard to read the meter, and I know that in my district, it was on the news not too long ago, where there was a pool in an apartment building, was going through renovation, and the pool had mosquitoes, and it became a news story, and the neighbors were all concerned about it, and they went up and vector control took care of it. And a lot of people aren't aware that vector control is a district. We did a TV program on that and learned that it's an assessment, it's a district, it's not anything other than a district, and there's never sufficient funds to get the message out. And the publicity that this has generated obviously has helped vector control. But what we need to do in the public safety arena is to ensure the safety of our residents, the seniors, the children, everyone else. When you say you can't go out at the evening hours, you can't go out in the morning hours because of the impact of West Nile, and I understand the weather's changing, so maybe West Nile will go dormant, but then it comes around next season, and it comes back again, and then we have continuing problems. So I strongly support this, and I think that managing it properly with vector control will ensure the safety of our communities, in particular, those areas that are impacted by this. I know people that live near flood control are concerned about the flood controls. Vector control is handling that, and it's a continuing problem. I don't think we're ever going to eradicate it, because it's not only in California, but many other states. And it may be just a seasonal situation we have to get used to, but clearly, if we have to go onto private property to maintain public safety and public control, then we need to do that. So if the meter readers can go into public property, or private property, I should say, to read the meters, I don't see why we can't maintain public safety for the citizens of our community with vector control employees. They're all certified, I'm sure, they're all hired, they're not, they're qualified people, their background checks, so they're not into the criminal element. These are people who are employed to do something for public safety. So I appreciate what vector control has done. Councilmember Smith, thank you for bringing this forward and helping the people in the committee who are very concerned about this. Thank you.
Councilmember Labange.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Smith, and God bless your relative and your family here. And I just wanted to thank you, Greg, because this is important as we talk about. I remember, it could have been two years ago, the buffalo gnat, was that?
The Black Lives?
Yeah, but a buffalo gnat is the technical...
It can be called a buffalo gnat.
That was attacking the hillside pretty inviting, and I know it was a serious problem at Dodger Stadium, it was a SWAT, not the baseballs, but the gnat. And I know in our part of the district, in my part of the city, the Los Angeles River is a lot of water. I think there's 110 million gallons a day that flow at some point down towards Long Beach. So there's some stagnant pools that are there that create this here. But I know that you spray that as Jack Hazelrigg, you're part of Jack Hazelrigg's team, is that correct?
That's correct.
And also, I know as county residents here, this is our annual tax bill, and I think we bumped it up by a few cents, is that correct?
I think we're up to $5.06.
Three dollars and 94, so you got to get another couple bucks out of me and Bridget. But no, there is a bill which is important, and I remember we fought to get it up a little bit because the public information was necessary, and also the spraying of the buffalo gnat. We are creating a new environment in the Los Angeles River, which may or may not be leading to this. And also, I think, Mr. Zein, when you spoke earlier, I spoke with my college professor in September, late August, September is the high season for a lot of this activity. Is that correct as a professional from a biological time?
Yeah, the most, the high season for these viruses is usually from August till mid to end September, so we're pretty much, we're getting in the clear now. So for mosquito season to end, it's about mid-October.
What's the life of a mosquito?
Seven to 10 days.
Seven to 10 days. Isn't that amazing? So much trouble that it caused. Anyway, I just wanted to make that point, if there's anything that we could, if we need to add to this, not this point, go forward strong with this, but to ask that the county give you a little more, because I know Dario Fromer, our state assemblyman, fought real hard with the governor to get more money that was needed, very much needed, and he fought hard for that, that was very important. But let us know if we need to ask, that we, and I don't like to raise fees, but I don't want to hurt people, and if we have to raise fees for next year, because there is a biological change, an environmental change taking place in Southern California and the Great Southwest. And I think the drought may have something to do with it, as I've spoken earlier on issues related to wildlife and animals. I'm sure the environment of the water may have something. So please let us know as a sister agency of government, as a special district. I think it's real important. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you. And say hello to Mr. Hazelrigg for me, please.
I will.
Mr. Labange was the last speaker, so the matter is before us, which includes the ordinance. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved.
Madam President, I'd ask this go forth with?
It will be so ordered, going forth with, without objection. Next item?
Item number 13, Madam President, was reconsidered and called special, I believe, by Ms. Perry for Mr. Parks.
Yeah, I want to withdraw that request then.
All right, then I, Ms. Gruel, did you want to speak on item 13? I see, Ms. Gruel, did you want to speak on item 13? Your name came up. This is the item that Mr. Parks had had called special. All right, then the matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That matter is approved.
Item 16 was called special by Councilmember Perry.
Ms. Perry on item 16.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I wanted to call the, this particular item special because I just wanted to take a few moments to talk about two extraordinary individuals, two extraordinary men whose political careers and fighting for the rights of others began in the Ninth Council District. And I want to remember Congressman Augustus Hawkins and Congressman Edward Roybal. For those of you familiar with the history of both of these individuals, Mr. Hawkins began in the California State Assembly, coming from this area, and supported legislation that resulted in more African-Americans being appointed judges and state commissioners, and fought very hard for the rights of the poor, including the Fair Housing Act. And then Edward Roybal, although he was born in Albuquerque, New Mexico, moved to Boyle Heights when he was six years old. Early in his career, he was the president of a community services organization where he led a crusade against discrimination in housing, employment, and education. As many of you know, he was elected to the city council and gained attention for his vote against the subversive registration bill, which required written oaths as a measure of American loyalty for employment purposes. In 1962, Mr. Hawkins was elected to Congress, where he served until 1990, representing much of the South Los Angeles area that Congresswoman Maxine Waters represents now. And he, during his tenure, championed equal rights and pressed for legislation protecting youth, such as Drug-Free Schools and Community Acts. He was the author of the Minority Institutional Aid Act, which gave financial aid to traditional, traditionally minority colleges. In 1962, Mr. Roybal was the first Latino from California elected to serve in Congress since 1879, and that was, at that time, the election of a Rinaldo Pacheco. During his three decades of service in the House of Representatives, Mr. Roybal fought hard to protect the rights of minorities, the elderly, and the physically challenged. And in 1976, Mr. Roybal became the founding member of the Congressional Hispanic Caucus. In 1980s, he was instrumental in the establishment of the California Department of Education. And so because of the extraordinary contributions both of these men have made, not only to California, but particularly to the people who live on the east side of the city and in the south part of the city, I've asked the Los Angeles Unified School District to make a special effort to find a fitting tribute after both of these individuals and name two schools after them, and I'm pretty certain all of you will support me in making that request. I hope I have a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Perry, for that detailed reminder of the importance of those two figures. The matter is now before us, is a motion asking, oh, Mr. Ludo, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to rise and congratulate the council member. I think it's a phenomenal idea and very fitting. For those of you that get down to Central Library, up until at least a month or so ago, you could still see Gus Hawkins go down there once a month, come in from Washington, DC, and tell the librarian what books are out of place. He's so meticulous about his work. So anyway, what a great honor, a great idea, and good job, Jan Perry.
Mr. Reyes.
I too, I too want to rise and just accompany my colleague. I think it's great, and we were just commenting, it'd be wonderful if they can appreciate that honor while they're still here, and to have that ability to share with their family and friends. And when you're in your golden years, it's easy to forget all of the tribulations one goes through. And being a strong supporter and fan of Congressman Roybal, Congressman Roybal, of course, and his daughter, Lucille Roybal, they've done tremendous work for the east side and for the LA region as a whole, so I just want to thank her, and that's a great, great gesture. And it'd be a fun thing to do, an honorable thing to do, and something that really commends their accomplishments. So great job.
All right, the matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 20, and that was called special by Councilmember Gruel. There is an amending motion that has been distributed to the council.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if I could ask Bill Robertson, who looks like he's making his way up here, colleagues, and I want to thank Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Labange, who passed this out of committee just a week or so ago, are, it's called the 50-50 Program. We've all heard about the fact that we don't have enough money to fix our sidewalks. We need to identify funds. How do we do that? And for me, continuing to use the excuse that the city does not have enough money to deliver those services and to not fix the sidewalks is really unacceptable. And thanks to the leadership of Bill Robertson, and I know I'm not going to let Julie Butcher get away, I see her in the back, and SEIU's been very supportive of this, that we have to look at the way the city operates and change that way and be able to identify funds, look at creative ways outside the box, which, and working with Bill Robertson, we have today. What I have proposing today is a 50-50 sidewalk program that in fact gives our homeowners an option. If they agree to pay 50% of the cost, we will begin to fix the sidewalk within 30 days, guaranteed, guaranteed, 30 days. And I know Bill Robertson keeps his word that we will do that in 30 days. We are out here today and talking about this today because we think this pilot program, hopefully, will be able to go citywide. The city of Los Angeles alone has 4,000 miles of sidewalk to repair, and as committed right now, we're only able to fix 74 miles per year. I think if we had to fix all of them, it would take us 83 years to complete all of these repairs. I believe we must do better, and so I have determined that I will be able to increase the miles in my district by 25%, making it possible, colleagues, if I'm so lucky to be reelected in three years, that out of my eight years in office, that I will be able to fix all 71 miles that are currently in need of repair in my district. So I'm standing here today, and we have developed a 50-50 voluntary partnership program here. We have items where we'll be able to put on their doors to remind them. And, you know, we had a little piece in the paper one day, we've been talking to people on neighborhood councils, and we have dozens, before we've even really publicized this, dozens of people ready to participate in this program. And if you have, and maybe I'll ask Mr. Robertson to kind of explain the program, but what I understand is if three or four-year neighbors get together, the price is even less for them to participate in the program. So if I could, Bill, if you could give a real, just brief update on how this program will operate?
Sure, thank you, council member. And Madam President, it's a pleasure to be here this morning. This is a, this is a big step, the 50-50 sidewalk program. As Councilmember Gruel stated, this is an opportunity to actually increase the number of miles that the city reconstructs every year. But this program primarily is patterned after the County of Santa Barbara sidewalk repair program. Chicago has basically the same program. Livermore, California, Boulder, Colorado, Tallahassee, Florida. Many municipalities have turned to a 50-50 program to address the sidewalk issue that is plaguing cities across the United States. This program basically will allow us to go out when we have an individual that's willing to share the cost. We do a cost estimate, and if it's just the one homeowner on the block, the cost will be about $10 a square foot. If we can get two or three, four additional neighbors to join in on the repair program, it actually reduces the cost to about $8.50. So there's a savings for both the city and the property owner when we get additional individuals on the block to do the repair. We think this program is going to be very successful. We would like to see it expanded, possibly next year, where each council district has the ability to use 50% of their general fund sidewalk. That said, we would go from 52 miles to about 78 miles of sidewalk repaired using a 50-50 sidewalk program.
And I know, and Ms. Hahn has been a big advocate of repairing sidewalks, and she showed us many of the pictures that she's had of people who fell, I think, in a commercial area. And this, again, can be done any part, whether homeowner or commercial in the area, is that correct? In the, or just doing the homeowners first?
Currently, this pilot is primarily for residential areas only. I know Councilmember Labange, we've been working with his staff, to exclude commercial areas, because there is an ordinance available to the city that we could enforce, the commercial areas and industrial areas, to fix their sidewalks. And that's something that we're still investigating. It hasn't been enforced for a number of years. But we think this program basically should be designed and kept in the residential portions of the city, and most of the other cities that have a 50-50 are primarily just for the residential areas.
Well, colleagues, again, this is, I think, going to be, hopefully, just the first step in us improving all the sidewalks around the city. So we don't have any lawsuits where we're having to vote to settle those lawsuits. I think it's over four, at least four million or greater that we often have to do per year. And this is a way that we can say to the public, not only are we going to repair sidewalks, but we're going to... but we're going to do it in a 30-day period of time, in 30 working days. Mr. Labange wanted to make sure we knew that, 30 working days. But also, the remainder of the dollars will go in my council district for this pilot program. With the CDBG dollars I'm utilizing to fix in low-income areas, we will still continue to do that, as well as a percentage will go to some of those emergency, you know, where it's quite dangerous, and we'll do that. But this is a great program. I just want to thank Public Works. I want to thank, again, Julie Butcher from SEIU. And we're going to be out there today, if we are so lucky today to pass this, fixing a sidewalk in North Hollywood, to tell people, we mean business. We're going to fix your sidewalks. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Our next speaker is Ms. Hahn, to be followed by Mr. Labange and Mr. Ludlow. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Wendy Gruel, I really want to thank you for thinking out of the box. This is a great program. It's a solution to a problem that plagues every single one of us in our council districts. Every one of us remembers walking precincts, knocking on doors before we got elected, and what was probably the number-one thing we heard was, fix these sidewalks. I was taken personally by the hand because they didn't think I would believe it if I saw, if I didn't see it for myself. And that has been one of the things that probably we get the most complaints about in my council district. So this is a great idea, and I think the residents of Los Angeles will appreciate, Councilwoman Gruel, that, you know, you didn't take no for an answer, and you didn't take what's always been done as an excuse. And you said, how can we figure out how to do this? And I think our residents are going to appreciate the fact that in a tough budget time, we're looking for solutions. We're not looking for excuses, and this seems like a great idea. I want to know how my council district can be next on the list to participate in this program. And I certainly think this is something that neighborhood councils will be very interested in and will also be, I think, the vehicle to get this word out on what's in store if homeowners want to participate. And I think we're giving people an option. We're giving people something that they can also participate in to help solve this problem. It is unbelievable. Like you said, we tried to pass a bond measure not too long ago that the voters actually turned down to fix our sidewalks. But there's no way we're going to be able to fix all the miles of the sidewalks in our lifetimes. So this is a good, this is a great solution, Wendy. Thank you for doing this. And how do I sign up next?
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Our next speaker is Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Wendy and Janice, and I remember the picture you brought in, a little three-by-five of a woman who came from a beauty parlor, and she had those stark eyes, right looking at the lens as her face was buddied on a trip and fall. And I know we all talk about this, and also you talked about the aspect of getting here and walking. We did walk over a lot of bad sidewalks that we need to do. So it's very important, and the time has come. Wendy, I want to thank you and thank Greg Smith, who's a great chair of Public Works because it's all about public works on that issue there. I do want to ask, and I thought about this morning because I walked over a new sidewalk at a public school in Silver Lake, and I thought, you know, in the old days, Bill, you used to stamp the inspector's name in there. You know, I'm proud of Crew 152 and a lot of your folks out there. I don't know if you put a little stamp that says, if your crews have names, it would make sense, kick it around yourself because the pride that goes to putting it out, the work you're doing in Largemont, the work you're doing around the city, you're making them work hard for the people and deliver, which is so important. The question I want to ask later on, members, is 50-50, is see if we go 100% for commercial because you could walk on some streets, and commercial doesn't turn over as fast as residential. Do we ask this to come forth? And also, in committee, which is a good committee meeting, you spoke of in some realtors, as right now you have to have all the sliders, if they're the form or if they're not the proper glass, removed, house bolted, all these other requirements. Should we require sidewalks to be fixed? Because I think it's, Wendy, how many years would it be to 2087? 2080? Whatever it would be to try to fix all these sidewalks, maybe we do it there. But we have to work with our neighborhood councils and the realtors, et cetera. But tell me, just so everybody explains, how you focus on this? Your crews now systematically work, you go in, you rip it all out, another crew forms it up, and then another crew finishes it. And that's three different, tell us a little bit.
Yep. Basically, when we started the original sidewalk program, we actually took a, one crew, assigned them to do all three phases of the project. We found, as we got further and further into the budget problems we were having, we were losing a lot of individuals, transferring, going to other departments, a lot of retirees. So we saw we had some vacancies. So we had to look at a productive way of reconfiguring the sidewalk crews. And we found that by sending crews in to first do the demolition. A second crew comes in and does the actual forming, and then the third crew actually comes in and does the pouring of the concrete. We saw that we actually doubled our production with less people than we had previously.
And also, you hire from the hall when necessary, which is so important. You're not hiring a regular employee, but you're hiring from the hall, from the union hall, to put that finishing touch on the project.
Yes. When we have vacancies for cement finishers and cement finisher workers, we go to the union and get support there.
Anyway, well, I want to thank you. Wendy, I want to thank you, and I want to thank the Bureau. Come back to me on that commercial property, if you would, and let me know what we could do on that. But it's so important, and I thank you again, Greg, for your leadership in Public Works. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Mr. Ludlow, Mr. Zine, and Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill, could you just reiterate the numbers? I didn't write them down. I just wanted to get, what was, in your estimation, the cost of the program and what it would take to do it on an average household? I didn't catch that.
Basically, the cost through this program, if there is one individual that wants to take part in the program, and let's say he has 200 square feet of sidewalk to be repaired, his cost is going to be $10 per square foot, or the total cost will be $10 per square foot. If there's three or four, five neighbors that are willing to join in on the same block, and we get 1,900 square feet total repairs, we then become extremely cost-efficient in the number of repairs we do, and the price drops from $10 to $8.50 per square foot.
About $8.50. And first, I just obviously want to commend Councilmember Gruel. I was looking in the paper today, and she's re-referring as the pothole queen. So it's fitting now that she's moved from the street to the curb, up onto the sidewalk, and pretty soon she's going to be the doorstep queen. Anyway, and Julie is always, Julie Butcher's always looking out in the interest of people irrespective of their socioeconomic status. The obvious glaring question that comes up is, how do we ensure that more affluent areas that have the ability to cover $2,000 aren't detracting our sidewalk crews from homeowners in lower-income neighborhoods that can't come up with $2,000? I'm sure you've thought about it because, again, the three of you are very committed to working-class people and lower-income neighborhoods. But just for the person who's listening and other council members that might also be sort of questioning how we ensure that there's equity, how does that play out in this program? Can you hold my time?
We're fortunate in that the city has two sidewalk programs. We have the general fund sidewalk program where that money can be spent anywhere in the city. We also have the community development block grant program where we repair 12 miles of sidewalk each year. That funding is specifically for the low-to-moderate-income areas of our city. We feel that we have an excellent chance to, you better use that money and make grants available to the low-to-moderate-income areas of the city, granting where the normal voluntary program, the homeowner pays 50%, under the CDBG program, they may only pay 25% or as little as 10%, depending on their actual household income. So we think there's a huge opportunity to expand this citywide to include all areas of the city.
But let me ask you, does this, and again, it may just not have been part of the presentation, does the funding go to, towards adding additional city employees? Is, I mean, are we going to get an increase in the number of employees to actually be out doing more sidewalk? Because my guess is, right now, you have about as many employees, they're busy, they're not sitting around looking for...
No, you're absolutely correct. And if this were to go citywide, we would definitely need additional resources. And when we would hire those additional people, they would actually be funded by the 50% that the property owners are paying. So there'd be no additional costs per se to the city itself.
Okay. And I, and obviously, very supportive of the concept and would be the first one to join on to help add those new employees. And if we have homeowners, and I'm sure we will, I'm sure by council district, they're going to be lining up to take advantage of the program. But obviously, in the neighborhoods where they might not be able to afford that, and obviously you think of seniors on fixed income and so forth, that we would be adding employees so that even if we're shifting over and putting CDBG as the way that we'll continue with them, or we're general fund, we're going with them, that they don't lose the number of employees dedicated to doing that repair. And that what we're saying here, to match that 30-day commitment, there's enough bodies to get that done without interrupting the others. So assuming, and I know that you guys are all over it, but I just wanted to raise those. And I think this is, as Janice Hahn mentioned, thinking out of the box, and I really applaud it.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Our next speaker is Mr. Zine, to be followed by Mr. Reyes and Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Bill, the issue of slip and fall, how much does the city spend annually on slip and fall cases?
Usually, on average, and I would defer to the city attorney, but my recollection is it's about $4 million a year minimum.
$4 million?
Yes.
So if we can cut those down, obviously, we'll have more money in the general fund to use for other positive programs. And what is the issue that creates those sidewalks to deteriorate? It's not wear and tear by the pedestrians. What's the number-one cause?
90% of the damaged sidewalks in the city of Los Angeles are directly caused by parkway tree root growth.
That the city planted. And over the years, the roots uproot the sidewalk, and then we have these uneven sidewalks in many areas. That's correct. The focus, and I want to commend Wendy Gruel for thinking out of the box, from the potholes to the sidewalks, and we're making great improvements in the environment of the city, the most visible streets and sidewalks. Has it ever been approached on adopt a sidewalk where someone would pay the full cost to have that done? I understand the process that we have with the 50% if someone wants to adopt. And the reason I'm thinking of that is we just did on Sherman Way, the hearts on the sidewalk were similar to the Walk of Fame on Hollywood Boulevard for teachers, the Walk of Hearts. And one of our realtors, Joe Andrews, Century 21, came up with this idea, and we took the entire block, and they have a heart on different businesses where the Follow the Hearts, there's a restaurant, Follow the Hearts, and it was Follow Your Heart, the hearts for teachers, and it was all about teachers. They paid for that. The city waived the permits, and I understand we're doing that now. If someone wants to adopt that sidewalk, one of the commercial businesses, is that program available?
Currently, no. But I think that's, let's say, another huge opportunity for the city to look for those types of situations where we do have businesses or community groups that want to adopt. We have Adopt the Median Islands. We have Adopt the Sidewalk, excuse me, the Adopt the Streets. So we can certainly put together an Adopt the Sidewalk program.
So if we could come up with Adopt the Sidewalk program, and they would fund the full cost, and one thing I think about is down near LAX along Sepulveda Boulevard where old trees, and it's incredible how they've been uprooted. If some of the airlines would say, we'd adopt this, so that program is not in place?
No, not currently.
Okay. So if we were to work on something where commercial would say, we'd like to adopt the sidewalk, and their logo wherever would be on that sidewalk, that they paid for that, and they pay the full tab, whether it be in the west side or the valley or any other place, we could approach that program, and then other dollars that we're saving can be used in some of the other areas of the city.
Yes, and we'd be glad to investigate that process. Naturally, we'd have to have the concurrence of the city attorney as far as the logos and whatnot, but I believe it's an excellent idea.
Because I'm thinking of neighborhood councils that want to get involved, and they have funding for their communities, the chambers of commerce, the service clubs, and people continually want to exercise, and they walk in the neighborhoods and the commercial areas, and then we're paying $4 million in slip and falls. And if we can have this partnership, and what Wendy's come up with is a wonderful opportunity for neighborhoods, and if we can get, with the 1,900 square foot, then the cost is down to $8.50. But if we can get a commercial operation to say, okay, we'll pay the whole tab, then everyone can benefit. Okay, Wendy, we'll get together and see if we can come up with that idea, the Adopt the Sidewalk program. And I've spoken to some businessmen in the past, and they showed interest in that. They obviously want some recognition, their logo or their name or whatever, if it would fit the criteria. Thank you, Bill. And you're doing a fine job. I know we're coming out with another program shortly for streets. I forgot what it's called, but some super-duper whiz-giz, get it done, and keep on moving and fill those potholes.
Cold and Place Recycling.
What's it called?
Cold and Place Recycling.
Okay, we're waiting for that one.
I think that's a better name than Mr. Zine's. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. One, congratulations, Congressman Gruel. Good job. In the past, when we've tried to make these kinds of efforts, I recall the issue of how do you create a system and a process that actually gets to the specifications that the department has? And one of the stumbling blocks has been that the actual cement mix has a life period. And to be able to administer and produce the kind of product that's going to be meeting the specs of the department, that the, to do on a sidewalk-by-sidewalk, piece-by-piece, meal basis, there wasn't a way to do it because of the size of the mix and the cost of labor. How have you been able to deal with that, given this program? How did you overcome that?
Well, primarily, the city of Los Angeles is fortunate. We do have one of the largest sidewalk programs in the United States, any municipality. Just to give you a comparison, this 50-50 program, who was primarily structured after the County of Santa Barbara's program, they repair 6,900 square feet a year. We do that daily in the city of Los Angeles. So that's just a comparison of the types of programs. So we're fortunate that our buying power has allowed us to get a very decent price on the cost per square yard for concrete. The problem is, we've seen the price of concrete rise approximately $9 per cubic yard in the last three to four months with the large growth right now in China. A lot of the concrete is going to China. So we are facing a slight problem, and we're going to have some increased prices. But with our mixed designs that we use, we're looking at a mixed design that we know when we put it down, provided it's not damaged by tree roots or a truck running over it, it's going to last a minimum of 50 years. So we're very fortunate that we have the Department of General Services, their materials lab behind us, and writing our specs for us for all our sidewalk.
So if there's an area, let's say, of, let's say, for example, 15 different sites, and they're spread out through a certain radius, you'll be able to overcome that challenge of getting to those sites on a specific time in order for the mix and the cement to take hold?
Yes, yes. And what we do basically, and one of the reasons we went to the phasing process, is so that when we go in, we do the original, we do the demo very quickly, we remove the damaged sidewalk, we then bring another crew in that does all the forming for the pour. And to eliminate that jumping around over a number of days, the actual pouring crews, when they come in, they pour huge amounts of concrete, and they're able to go to place to place to place because all they're doing is actually pouring the concrete, and they don't have to worry about delays with forming or any other type of work that needs to be done, it's already done for them. So that's how we've eliminated that problem from going from place to place.
I wish you guys would have thought that 10 years ago when we were trying to do it, and the street went back wind. But then again, I'm glad we're here. I'm glad Congressman Gruel has been able to put this together, and it's a model to be duplicated, and thank you for that effort. The youth component hopefully will be something that we could continue promoting, and how we start moving resources towards our youth in terms of jobs and working with the unions is very, very important. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes, our next speaker is Ms. Gruel, to be followed by Mr. Zine.
Just real quickly, and Mr. Zine, I may have a question. I wanted to thank all my colleagues and their questions and issues because this is, again, we're thinking outside the box, and we're new territory that we're kind of creating as we... as we develop this program. And I think, Mr. Ludlow, your questions were very on target, because we similarly were concerned about making sure that we took care of those areas that were low-income that could not afford that. And this really allows us to do both, and to increase the amount of sidewalks we're able to repair by that 25%. I think Mr. Zine talked about the sidewalks and Adopt the Sidewalk. Some in my district, in the bids, in the area where there's a bid, they've actually done that, where they have worked, I know, on Ventura Boulevard in Studio City, where they have created their stars, and in Sherman Oaks, where they've looked at various areas where they've repaired the sidewalks and had some way in which they've identified this was for the productions that had occurred in those areas. And so they have a little star in each of those, kind of like the Hollywood Walk of Fame, but our own Studio City Sherman Oaks Hall, or Walk of Fame. I think the other item I just wanted to mention was the payment plan, which we talked to, Mr. Smith talked about in committee, which was, right now, the pilot program is you pay immediately, and we're hoping as well that we can do it by credit card as well. But we'd like to see for those individuals who may not have all the money upfront, that we do have a payment plan. And after this pilot program, we'll be able to determine the feasibility of that. And similarly, Mr. Ludlow, the other question you had was about how we do this with staff, and that's why it's a 90-day program. And Mr. Roberts, you know, looked at their staff, how we could do this, and so we almost have to do it in this 90 days to be able to accommodate what else he has planned. But I hope that we will come forward in the budget process this next year and be able to say that this program will be citywide. And I just want to thank, again, the department and all of you around this table for supporting us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Zine?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of follow-up. I wanted to make sure I mentioned it correctly, it was the Walk of Hearts on Sherman Way with Joe Andrews, I didn't want to misstate that. And also, the rubberized, I remember there was an experiment, whatever happened with the rubberized sidewalks they were putting in, in certain areas? I remember seeing it in the West Valley, and I never received a report back. What's happened with that program?
We have approximately seven sites throughout the city where we've used either poured-in-place rubberized sidewalk, which is poured just like concrete, or we've used the brick pattern, the rubber comes in a brick pattern. We have those down, like I said, in a number of pilot test sites. What we've been looking at is, number one, is what the ultraviolet light does to the material, is it starting to fade? And we are seeing some fading in the material. And these have been down now approximately five years. We have a fading problem, we saw some problems with the curling of the edges, which actually in fact would create a trip and fall. There are, they are making technological advances in the material, so we're going to take another look at the new generation of materials, do some additional pilots. It is more expensive than the actual concrete sidewalk, but the long-term advantage is, once the product is solid in its performance, it would allow us just to go out after seven, eight years, when the tree roots have grown again, and it's raised the rubber up a little bit, we just pop the panels out, trim the roots, and put the panels right back down. So the long-term benefit, we've seen advantage there. But we're still looking at testing the material. We don't feel comfortable with it yet to go citywide with it, so we're still investigating the feasibility of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. I think that is our last speaker on this item, so if we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That item is approved. Congratulations, Ms. Gruel.
And that was as amended?
Fourth with on that? Okay. As amended, and let's make that fourth with. If we can take item 22 out of order, is that correct, Mr. Labange? And I don't think, we're just going to vote on that, so if there's nobody wishing to be heard, let's open the roll on item 22, please. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Let us return to item 21 then.
And that was called special by Councilmember Viera-Gosa, and there is a substitute motion that has been distributed.
Okay. We have item 21 before us. Mr. Viera-Gosa?
Yes, I want to make it absolutely crystal clear that the committee voted to make the peak-period bus-only lane on Wilshire Boulevard between Federal Avenue and Sentinel Avenue a permanent improvement. We also voted for that on the MTA board, it has the support of the council member representing that district, and this amendment just codifies what was the decision that was made in committee.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Viera-Gosa. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I know that we have a number of members who are having to leave for other appointments, and I just wanted to recognize that we have people in the audience who have been participating in, on this on both sides. We have members of the Bus Riders Union here, who has been in support of this project. We have some of the community people there who have had some concerns, and legitimate concerns about the project. But members, I want to thank Councilmember Viera-Gosa, both as a member on MTA, as well as my other two colleagues who are MTA members, as well as the Department of Transportation in working through this. As we all know, our number-one concern that we hear about from our constituents is, when are you going to do something about traffic? And there are some very, very large global ideas. Large global ideas are build new freeways, build new lanes, build and do high, highly-expensive capital projects, as well as projects that are going to take a long time. We know that we also can't wait. We've heard an awful lot this morning, whether it was Alvin Blaine, whether it was the case we just dealt with, in what can we do as pilot projects? What works, what might work more efficiently, less costly, and get the job done? What we know in this region is we have got to get people out of their single occupancy vehicles. Everyone driving every place they want to go, one-to-a-car is the most significant problem we have. Our bus riders, and MTA in particular, have long recognized, if we can get more efficient buses, speedy buses, and more people riding those buses, that will make a major dent. West LA, the Wilshire Boulevard Rapid Bus Program came in and said, can you try a pilot project here to give an exclusive lane, some of which had parking restricted already, some of which we added additional parking restrictions, and said, give it to the buses, give the buses the override capability on the signalization. And members, it is working marvelously for the buses. In a very short distance of time, they are saving a remarkable amount of time, and if we can magnify that by other miles on Wilshire and get other entities and agencies to connect, we will have shown that bus ridership can work, and more often, even more important, that bus, even in that short distance, which has the exclusive override lane, is, now has higher ridership. We know that if we can multiply this through the entire stretch of Wilshire, we will save a half hour to 40 minutes on a bus ride from the end of Santa Monica to downtown City Hall, and that is impressive. There is a consequence. The consequence is the people who are in the remainder streets may have some impact, but as they sit there, and I've been there, and you're sitting in that line waiting, and you see those buses going by, and you see those buses fuller and fuller, you start to think, maybe this can work, maybe this is where it needs to work, and maybe I should make a change. Members, we've had people who've said, it's creating too much an effect on our city streets. The lines are backed up a little bit longer than where you're comfortable with, it's gone a little bit worse than we would have expected. But that's the cost we pay in an incentivized and disincentivized program. You've got to have both in the balance. Two things, and I want to thank Councilmember Viera-Gosa for saying, the city is committed to this, we are going to make this pilot project work, we're going to make it permanent, but we are asking for a six-month report back. And members, I have talked to County Supervisor Zev Yarosowski, who controls the next stretch. The next stretch from where this ends is at the city-county line through the VA. And I said, I need proof that the county Public Works Department is going to extend it through the county, because Zev was a valiant supporter of this, and I said, Zev, your county engineer is saying something different, as I understand it. Your county engineer is saying, we won't do it here unless we get widening. It can't be with widening, it's got to be do what the city did. The city of Santa Monica, Councilmember Weiss and I are going to be at a West Side Council of Government meeting on Thursday, and we're going to say to Santa Monica, you show too that you can extend it from the east, from the west side of the city boundary through Santa Monica. If in six months neither of those two entities have said, we're willing to step up, we're willing to implement, then I think the city will have to consider pulling the plug on it, because we can't have one small segment in our city participate when all this talk of cooperation, all this talk of doing something together, MTA saying we're committed to it. Two members on MTA, the City Councilmember of Santa Monica and the supervisor, in fact, all five supervisors sit on MTA, they've got to be able to say to their public works department, their engineers, it works, the city tried it, we've got to have the responsibility and the guts to back it up and do it here. So it's coming back in six months to Councilmember Viera-Gosa's committee and the council, and I do ask for the I-vote today, and thank the council member for voting for it, both on MTA, becoming familiar with it, and moving it forward.
Thank you very much. Mr. Viera-Gosa?
My only, I'm not sure you could add to the eloquence of that statement, except that for those of us who want to do something about the gridlock in the city, this is one of the small things that we could do that have a big impact and don't cost a lot of money, and certainly bear great fruit. And Ms. Misakowski actually is a seatmate with a gentleman who sits on the MTA board, and I know that also represents a part of Wilshire Boulevard, and who knows, maybe that line will get extended all the way down to downtown Los Angeles. So I would urge your I-vote.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? Okay, if not, let's please open the roll on this item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
There was public comment in committee, so under our rules, unless somebody moves for public comment, we don't do it here. Okay. Next item, please.
Item number 23 was called special by Councilmember Viera-Gosa.
Okay. Mr. Viera-Gosa?
Yes, this is a verbal motion with respect to, in light of market changes since the contract was first negotiated over six years ago, it makes sense to have a verbal motion asking that 2.8% cost-of-living adjustment be authorized for the six-month contract extension. This came before the T Committee, it was approved unanimously, and we would hope that the council would approve it as well.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Viera-Gosa, that was 2.8% cost-of-living authorized for the length of the contract?
For the six-month contract, authorized for the six-month contract extension. You're welcome. I would urge your I-vote.
All right, we have that request before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, Madam President, item number 65 was called special by Councilmember Garcetti. Councilmember Garcetti, item 65.
We're going to take 65 before 24? Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right. Colleagues, we have before us reorganization plan for the Community Redevelopment Agency, a plan that I think in balance is a good one, one which will help the agency move forward, but I wanted to make a couple notes on it. We had some extensive discussions in committee. We have consulted both with the agency management and also with the organized units in the CRA as well, with AFSCME, and wanted to spell out a couple things that are in here and make sure that we're all on the same page as well. This reorganization plan looks, you know, we kind of have this back and forth over the years about centralizing, decentralizing redevelopment work in Los Angeles, but I think that we have really gone into new territory here that will be, as I said, on balance, very positive for the city and how we do our redevelopment work. We've got some areas in which this is already working extremely well. We look at areas like Hollywood, where year-to-date, we had twice the revenue that we expected to have a year ago. We look at the ability for communities to have input and to be able to control and influence redevelopment work. This is a really important move forward. I do want to say a couple things. One, in the report, and very specifically spell out that we are moving that the CRA policy now be, one that they said that they engage in anyways, but we want to formalize this, that where there are CRA facilities for office space, that we look at and exhaust city-owned and CRA-owned facilities before going to private ones, and I wanted to reiterate that here as well. I also wanted to make sure that, as we always do, that of course there won't be any retaliation on any employees who, in their off-time, have come and testified. That's something that I know that we will all respect and ensure doesn't happen. And we also want to keep a close eye on the coordination of our housing projects that the agency is engaged in, to make sure that the reform that's happening in the Housing Department and the Redevelopment Agency actually are in tandem, and we've asked for a report back on that. So we'll be looking forward to making sure that that is done more seamlessly, so that we make sure the right expertise is where it needs to be, the Redevelopment Agency on housing, and similarly, that the Housing and Redevelopment Agency are really, not just at the very top, but also at the bottom, looking at that. I also am very comfortable with the salary increases that are a part of this, but I do want to say that that is something that the agency should be looking at throughout the agency at all levels, that obviously, as we look to attract talent at the top, we should also make sure that we're rewarding talent at all levels. So looking at that in the future is something that I wanted to also underscore. But I appreciate the union's work on this, I appreciate Mr. Overm's work and his leadership on this as well. You know, when we recruited you from Burbank, or you came to us, I forget, we were just talking about that, we really wanted to be able to give you the tools to be a manager and to get out of your way, to make sure that we're fulfilling our fiduciary responsibility and our oversight responsibilities, but meantime, to let a vision go forward that will hopefully blossom into all areas of the Redevelopment Agency, and really usher in a time that we look back on as really the golden years of redevelopment in Los Angeles. So congratulations, and you have my support on this redevelopment, reorganization.
Mr. Ludlow?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to also rise and thank not only Bud Overm, but Chairman Hudson, Paul Hudson. The items that come out in this that I think the public would be most interested in, obviously that the effort to try to streamline the executive level is a smart, smart move. I think we see more and more corporate America trying to do that. I think whenever you can reduce the number of people reporting into the CEO, it basically requires leadership at the top, and it also ensures that it's a doable management reporting structure. It can get very, very demanding to have it the reverse. Secondly, throughout the report and throughout the discussions, I have the sense that the bargaining unit for the employees has felt like this has been a process that, I know there's been some stickler points, there are times that you've gone to arbitration, but I think that there's been a spirit of working together. I have not been inundated by calls from the bargaining unit that where we have arrived at is a problem area, and so people are going to disagree for a while, but I think there's been a lot of deliberation. But at the heart of this really, for me, is the regional redevelopment of the project clusters, and having the regional administrators in a much more, I think, direct way, and their ability to connect with council members and their staffs and all of the different constituents that are in each district. I happen to luck out under this one, because I think the person that you have there is a proactive, creative individual, so I'm biased, but I appreciate this, I too support it. I think it's a step in the right direction. This agency has struggled for many, many years, been one of the difficult agencies to sort of get our arms around as a public. People go back many, many years of the struggles and the frustrations at the grassroots level to try to feel like they got access and could have a say, and people in the public have a voice in the redevelopment of some of the most blighted areas of the city. And I can say, in the 12 months that I've been on the council, or 13, that this has been a very, very enjoyable process, working with the new leadership of the agency, and I think this plan is a step in the right direction. So for those people in the public that are listening, I hope they view this as a good step, streamlining, putting real leadership at the top, structuring this in a way that it's not so overburdened in terms of the reporting aspects. I think the salary increases, I do agree, are appropriate. And last but not least, they do like the new focus on the project areas under these regional administrators, and I think it's going to help us a great, great deal. So to Mr. Fujioke and to Mr. Overm and our chairman, thank you very, very much for the work that you've done on it. Look forward to a year of good progress.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Members, item 65 is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Members, we had received three public comment cards after the public comment period had been opened and closed. And if there's no objection, I would like to open the public comment period for the three speakers. We now are down to 11 members, so, and I know others are excused, so if we can be brief with the public comment, I would appreciate that. Let me call the three comment cards that were received, Sandy Miranda, Daniel Schrader, and Candido Maris.
I want to thank you, councilmembers, for allowing me this time to speak. I know we met before in the past regarding some contracts, janitorial products, et cetera. The reason why I'm here- The reason why I'm here today is, first of all, this contract has created a lot of side effects. I'm going to try to restrain from getting emotional here, because it has gotten down to the city workers, particularly DWP employees, through one of the top managers who was targeted, and we were investigated. They put, for 10 months, the custodial staff was followed by investigators, and right now, these people are being terminated, they are being fired, they're in the process of pending termination. And one of the owners of this contract did say to another vendor that DWP employees were going to get fired, and they were going to fall. And it's currently happening right now, and you guys need to do an investigation. This has been very upsetting to see that people's rights have been taken away, to see that their civil rights have been taken away. These were good city employees, they've been with the City of Los Angeles for over 20 years. No proper procedure was followed. If you follow anybody for 10 months, I'm sure you could find something on them. One of the individuals has gotten to the point where she had a heart attack, and they're talking about putting a pacemaker. This was coming down from one of the top managers, particularly this gentleman's name was Tom Hokinson, who allowed this investigation to go on. And again, I'm going to say this again, the owner of this company that this contract was awarded to, that said that people were going to fire and people were going to fall.
All right, can I ask you to sum up? Again, this matter is coming to council, it was in committee, and we all have discussion on it in city council shortly.
So there again, we would like for your guys' help and support into looking into this matter. This is not right, what's going on, the safety of the workers, the abuse, the retaliation. These are custodians at an entry level. These people were hired at an entry level. These people weren't given the opportunity to go to college and get a well degree. These people are hard-working people. DWP has downsized so much that these people are taking on the job of five, six city workers because we're so short-staffed.
All right.
And we really need your help and support in looking into this. This is wrong.
All right, we have two other speakers. Can I ask them to come forward?
Ladies and gentlemen, councilmembers, Madam President, my name is Daniel N. Schrader. I'm a civil servant, a 20-year career employee of the Department of Water and Power, and a part-time professor of management at Cal State, University of Los Angeles. Recently, a number of serious allegations have arisen about the DWP and this city. We know why some of the civil servants are here in your chambers. There is no viable alternative for them to act in accordance with Section 10-03 of the Department of Water and Power Administrative Manual to fulfill their moral and condition of employment obligations as civil servants employed by the City of Los Angeles to report improper government activity, actions, and/or practices which interfere with our promise to well and faithfully discharge duties in the public's best interest. I have made presentations and submitted reports to the Ethics Commission, the Civil Service Commission, and to the Board of Water and Power. They all have managed to set them aside. What is it that motivates top executives of a large municipal utility to bully first-level supervisors and their subordinates? What is it that motivates a union as strong as the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 18, to look the other way? What is it that causes our managers to allege that it is the responsibility of contracted organizations like Fleishman-Hillard to manage city funds? What is it that causes the Controller's Office to terminate investigators looking into possible misuse of city funds in the City Attorney's Office and investigating personnel actions? In a nutshell, it is conflicts of interest and the false notion that accountability can be reassigned, diluted, or lost in committee. These have become the hallmark of this administration. Out of respect for the offices you hold and the individuals supporting accountable city management, I am not going to try and present here, in what remains of my three minutes. However, by submitting a copy of a letter published in the August 13, 2004 edition of LA Weekly, and asking you to follow up on the presentations that I made to the Board of Water and Power Commissioners on August 17 and September 7, I am assuring your awareness and giving you an advance notice that I would like an opportunity to share with you some of my experiences and insights regarding how political interests have plagued this city and how they have provided an opportunity for the unscrupulous to gain and wield power within the Department of Water and Power.
All right. I'm going to ask you to sum up. We have--
I think after you see the root problem, it will be clear that these civil servants in your chambers are a symptom of the underlying root problem for which management must be held accountable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Candido?
Thank you, Madam President. We appreciate that you've given us the time to speak. As a member of the Small Local Business Advisory Committee, these issues were brought to us. We're talking about health issues. When you have an individual who has a heart attack because of the stress that's placed on her, I had a gentleman call me, his blood pressure was 220 over 160, I believe. It was so high because the pressures that were being placed on these people. Why? Because someone was walking around with a contract and saying, you must do this, and you must sell this, and you must buy this. It is outrageous to see our city employees going through this. Counsel, there's no more to say. I mean, this is a cancer, and please, help eliminate that cancer. Thank you.
Thank you. That now closes the public comment period, and Madam Clerk, I believe there's one more item on the desk.
Yes, Madam President. Item number 24 was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Colleagues, today we're voting on a motion that will enact a policy in the City of Los Angeles for all hybrid vehicles to be able to park at city meters without needing to pay the meter. They still have to, of course, abide by the parking regulations of the amount of time they can spend in an area. But as a way to incentivize cleaner air in the city, a way to incentivize better use of low-emission vehicles, we heard earlier from Alvin Blaine, our new general manager of our General Services Department, how aggressive we've been as a city with our hybrid vehicles. In fact, last year was the first year we didn't actually increase our gas costs, even though oil prices had gone up because we had so many new vehicles that were hybrid vehicles. It's a pretty impressive statistic. And the same time that we're saving those costs, we're also driving down the costs associated with all the health afflictions that people have when we have terrible air. This is great. This is groundbreaking. It builds on, I think Mr. Padilla had similar motion originally for zero-emission vehicles, like electric cars, before. This takes hybrid vehicles, allows that incentivizing, which has been great. The response to hybrid vehicles in Southern California has been incredible. With some of the cars, a four and a six-month wait. So the market is there, we want to keep the market there. And talking with a lot of the car companies and how many hybrid models we're going to be seeing rolling out, it's a great way for people with the same range of their normal cars, with same horsepower as their normal cars, to be able to really drive down pollution in the city that unfortunately still has the worst air pollution in the United States. So I urge your support today. I know this has great support from Councilmember Perry, Mayor Hahn was there at the press conference, Mr. Labonge and others, but this is a really common-sense way that we can make a difference in our air quality here in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Garcetti, thanks for bringing this forward. I do think this is a great idea in sending out a message that we are encouraging and we are giving incentives for people to purchase clean-air vehicles. I would just ask for a friendly amendment to this. As you know, the governor just signed a waiver that hybrids with one driver can now use the carpool lane. I would like just, on this particular, maybe a report back on making sure our Department of Transportation is following the process and is putting in all needed paperwork to make sure that our hybrid vehicles will get the kind of sticker we're going to need to be in the carpool lanes. I just want to make sure they're on top of that. Thank you.
All right, with that request for a report back, the matter's now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Madam Clerk, what remains on the desk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
There is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Friday, October 1st, for city business that meets council policy.
Mr. Reyes is excused on October 1st?
And that clears the desk.
Are there any announcements, members? Mr. Reyes?
It's more of a personal announcement, but I just want to wish my son Eddie happy birthday today, he turned 14, so.
Happy birthday to Eddie.
Thank you.
All right. Other announcements? Are there any adjourning tributes? We do have adjourning tributes. Can I ask everyone in the audience, please, to rise? Mr. Ludlow?
Thank you, Madam President. Family presented this and wanted it to be relatively brief, asked that the council adjourn in memory of Margaret Forbes, passed away September 19. She was 88 years old, born on February 9, 1916, in Nicaragua. She was the mother of Arlen Lowe, president of the Country Club Heights Neighborhood Council, and daughter of Norma Forbes.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. Asked the council adjourn in the name of Irv Felder. Irv was a very active in our community in Chatsworth, he died at the age of 70. He was a member of the Chamber of Commerce, he was a former Navy pilot in the Korean War, and was very active in our Chatsworth Depot Foundation, which helped raise the money to decorate the Chatsworth Train Depot, which is the city's train depot, well-known in the community, very much active and very much liked. He is survived by his wife Barbara and her son Jordan. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Any other? Mr. Zine?
Irv Felder, I met him about four years ago. I believe his wife, LAPD Reserve Deputy Sheriff, and just a wonderful man that was a real tribute to the community. I want to add on my condolences to the family, and second on that.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Counsel is adjourned.